I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, and time is 7:02 PM. I'm going to take over the screen, show my flag. And everyone who can, please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, very good. Let's do a little bit of a roll call here. Please indicate your presence by saying here. Holly Bem.
Here.
David Bloomey. Erin Levitt Smith.
Here.
Craig McCormack. Craig McCormack.
Sorry, I was having a trouble on meeting here. I did the Pledge of Allegiance without my microphone on too, but I swear I did it.
Alan Needham.
Here.
William Rice is here. Richard Cortez, absent. Julie Eaton, present. Okay, and Sean Glenn, no longer with us. All right, let me just check, has Mr. Bloomey joined during that period of time? Does not appear so. Okay, Julie, I will ask that you be promoted and take.
He's coming in now.
Oh, there he comes. Okay. Dave. Is the power out where you are?
I am in the Witness Protection Program.
I guess so. All right, we're going to show Mr. Bloomey as present. Okay, so we have a full slate of regular commissioners, so there's no need to promote an alternate. But I know Julie would be ready for the job, should have come to that. All right, it's been three weeks since we met, I think, right? Three weeks, yeah. We do have minutes from the September 22nd, 2020 meeting. Alan, as usual, could you lead us through these as being the Commission Secretary?
Okay, sure, Bill. First correction I'm going to say is it appears that everything is page two. All the pages are page two, so I'm not sure how important that is. So let's identify things by line, so line 1 through 30.
On line 20, I would like to add another L to my name.
Holy. You're holy Holly.
And I lived in Germany, that's the only way they were able to, they always pronounce it holy. Holy, holy.
Okay, that sounds fair. Okay, lines 31 to 100, 51 to 100, sorry.
No, you did to 30. So you did 30, so 35. There should be a space after Smith and between ask.
Yep.
Anything else?
Now we're making amendments to the revisions to the minutes prior.
Oh, well, I just went through and.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually saw a bunch of those where the spacing wasn't right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, lines 51 through 100.
Line 53 is the first of many instances of Chairman Rice being strung together.
Chairman Rice.
I wonder what that means.
All right, so insert a space on line 53 between Chairman and Rice.
Also, lines 61 through 63, that sentence starting with Mr. Needham. I'm not sure, Alan, if the way this is represented is what you intended. Mr. Needham stated the only issue is that he doesn't want to have a part of the town that's used only for new people in town? Is that?
Uh, yeah, I thought that was a euphemism.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's what you said, Alan, but.
I think it is, because I would struggle with some specific identifiers, so.
I see, okay.
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 Line 72. Does the word owner need to be in there?
Owned.
Owner shift?
Isn't it owned?
Oh, that could be, okay, so that should be changed then, because it just didn't read right with owner.
Right, so on line 72, the word owner should be owned, O-W-N-E-D.
Does that make sense though?
With, yep. Parcels in town owned without any restrictions.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's line 71.
I got it.
Line 69, we have the Chairman Rice without the space.
Line 76, again spacing, I think preserving, certain, there should be a space.
And then line 78, same thing, but Ms. Levitt Smith.
Yep.
Yeah.
I had that too, 79, yep.
So, okay, so line 79, insert a space between but and Ms.
Then, Bill, I have a question for you on line, I think it's 86, 87. Chairman Rice stated his desire to accelerate the number of affordable units compared to the mechanisms that are now in place now. Is that the way? Not sure that reads in a way that's particularly clear.
Makes sense to me and I wasn't there.
Okay, well, that makes sense to you then.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I think it's okay.
Okay, okay.
It's a little, yeah, it might be a little awkward, but I think it's accurate.
On line 80, I'd like to take out my statement where it says she's a little uncomfortable, I want to take out the word little. I am uncomfortable. That is so ah and little should be taken out.
Okay.
You want me to page?
Nope, on line 88. Should there be a not at the end? Let me think. Well, I don't know. Oh, yeah.
It's okay.
It's okay the way it is convinced it develops to do that, or if it is, okay.
Line 93, I think it's, near the end it says he told, that should be spaced.
I have that as line 92.
92.
I'm sorry, yeah, what did I say? Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I heard you say 93.
Yeah, my line, for some reason it's not lining up, at least the way I've got it displayed here, but, sorry.
97 too, there's another spacing between Chairman and Rice.
I've got that as line 98.
Yeah, it's 97 on mine, I don't know if anybody else.
99, if it could capitalize my last name.
There's a few of those in here too.
I don't take offense to it.
Next. Lines 101 through 150.
I didn't think line 107 made any sense. To me, anyway, I don't.
The one that starts Chairman Rice answered?
No, it start, well, yeah, Chairman, it's answered by stating. By stating or multiple project, yeah.
I caught that one too, I wasn't sure what that was.
Yeah, that whole area, 107, like I just.
I think if we put on line 107, the word one in between stating. Or, so it would read Chairman Rice answered by stating one or more, one or multiple projects.
Okay.
Right, so Alan, you know, Alan gave this concept of one large development, I said, okay, maybe it's one or multiple.
Okay.
I've got line 123, but it might be a different line for you guys, another one of those Chairman Rice, lack of spacing.
Yeah, I showed that on line 122.
Actually, yeah, the capital.
Capitalize the R, please.
Yeah.
135, space between Chairman and Rice.
Yep, I also have on 127, remove her before Chairman Rice.
Yeah, okay. 127, remove the word her.
And 128 to 130 needs some reworking, because it does not make sense. It's a run-on sentence, and I just want to be sure we get this right, because this is, you know, a big discussion, so. Yeah. So I had, like, put a period after space, put a period after path, you know, I mean, they're just. Yeah, so, I, and I don't know if people want, so I'll just, so I thought. Put a period after space on line 130. And then capitalize so. Then put a period after path. You take out the word but and capitalize it.
Okay, so 130, period after space, capitalized S and so. And what was the next suggestion?
Put a period after path on 131. Take out the word but and capitalize the word it. And I think unit might be line.
Right.
Right.
So one, line 131, period after path, delete but, capitalize I. You know, I think some of this was probably transcribed.
Yeah.
For datum, okay, so I don't, I don't want to get too far off the idea, but yeah, the bus line instead of unit.
Yeah, I just think it's important to capture what we said, Bill, because I think these are the kinds of things we're going to be asked about.
Well, I had on, up to line 150.
135, there's another space, I think, I don't know if you got that, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, in the details? On line 150.
Yeah, you're missing an N and shouldn't.
Yep.
Line 150, respell, shouldn't.
And do you want to add in after up?
Shouldn't get caught up in the details, okay?
Oh, yeah, 192 was.
My line 160 is another one of the Chairman Rice, lack of spaces there. Just after the words, the next five years.
That one shows up on line 158 for me.
Okay.
Yep. Line 192, space between Chairman and Rice.
Also, in line, in line 175, but the sentence reading, Ms. Eaton asked Mr. Glidden, having an affordable housing plan gives the stipulation before your moratorium, how does it apply? So I'm not sure that that sentence, the sentence structure is right, but also the words moratorium and how are strung together.
Yep.
Line 183, Chairman Rice, space. And later on in that line, Ms. Eaton's should be apostrophe between Eaton and S.
Right. Same thing on.
86, 186.
Yep.
I've got 189 where Ms. Eaton's, it's not apostrophe S there either.
Right, yeah, it's my 186.
Dave, do you want to share something? You're stuck. You're sharing your screen, Dave.
Did we get 190, a space between commission in there?
Yep, okay, and another Chairman Rice's later on in the line 190. All right, let's move on, Alan, please.
So let's see, line 201 to 250. I've got something.
Go ahead, Alan.
I've got something on line 242, I think that's probably New Canaan.
Yeah.
It's on that line twice, Canaan, C-A-N-A-A-N.
C-A-N-A-A-N, yep.
Line 215 has another lowercase Rice for Chairman Rice. It's a sentence beginning with Chairman, right in the middle is the line.
I show that as 212.
Okay.
Yeah, 212.
We did a lot of talking that last meeting.
We did.
Yeah.
Um, line 221, I don't understand. Well, maybe it wasn't 221, okay, because that does make sense if I read it, I must have been looking at something else. Well, I don't know, you guys, I had it, I must have written the line down wrong. All right.
At the bottom of this page, there's a second to the last sentence, at least the way it's paginated for mine, says commission and. And there's no space between those two words. You see that?
Okay, I haven't seen that one yet.
I haven't either.
For me, it's line 240, but I don't know why my pages are misnumbered. That's, that's, that line, the far left begins with specific to 8-30G.
Yeah, it doesn't line up at all.
Yeah, I don't know why.
I, okay, so. I showed on line 237. Commission and without.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I see a reference here that I'm not, I don't remember. Line 239, Mr. Glidden stated inclusionary zoning would be 8-2. I or L?
I think it's I.
Okay, is that, that's correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another misspelling of New Canaan.
Yeah. So for me, that's line 244.
Two of them, actually. The two New Canaans right there in that.
Yeah, there's actually three that I.
Yeah, you're right, three, right, that's right. Is, I think it might be, Bill, for you, line 255, down payment, the word down payment, should that be space?
So we're on to the, if we're talking about 255.
4, it's on 254, Bill.
254, yep, 254, space between down and payment.
Yeah. So somewhere around line 267, Ms. Eaton's, we needed a.
Apostrophe.
Apostrophe in there, yeah.
Line 267, apostrophe on Eaton's.
292, I'm not sure the word permanent should be there, I don't know what other people think.
Yeah, you're right, I agree.
It should just be, make it some feedback, I don't know.
What was that one, Erin?
On 292, the word, the very first word, permanent, I think it should be stricken, I think it should just be feedback, but I don't know what other people think. Or if there's some other word.
Yeah, let's scratch permanent on line 292. Okay, Amanda, that was a lot of stuff, content looks really good, we just had some just a couple typos and things like that, all in all, excellent capturing of our meeting concepts, very good. Any other comments from Commissioners? Can I have a motion to approve the September 22nd meeting minutes as amended?
Still moved.
That was you, Craig, okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Erin, thank you. Any discussion on the comments or the amendments to the minutes? All in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Okay, we have five in favor, zero not in favor, and one abstention, which was Holly. Okay, the motion passes, thank you very much. Okay, now we can get back to the Affordable Housing Plan, so Mike, I see that you have revised per our last meeting and sent us the word document. All right. I looked through it. Printed it out, it was terrible, I printed it out the wrong way, but I do, I do like in general the way that it flows from page to page. I think it's an improvement over what we started with. I'd say, why don't we go through page by page again, and Commissioners, no, but let's try to wring out the last few comments we have here. So we can hopefully prepare for our listening session at our next meeting.
Bill, can I, are people aware that there's a housing forum sponsored through the library next Wednesday, 6 to 8?
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, somebody let me know, I did sign up for it, um, I, and I apologize, I might be able to pull it up. The exact name, but if you go to the Simsbury Library, there is a forum which I believe the first selectman is going to be there. Let me see if I can. So I just wanted to bring that to people's attention.
Or is there any detail associated with it, Erin?
Well, that's, I'm trying to see if I.
It's, it's at the library, it's not sponsored by the library, but it's at the library, I understand.
Well, it's a Zoom.
Yeah, it's a community group.
Yes. Um, you know what, I don't see, I'm just looking through, I guess I didn't get, I thought I'd gotten an email on how to Zoom to it, but I might have.
Erin, you're correct, there is a meeting, I signed up for it, I don't have the email in front of me right now with the specific.
Here it is, it's Inequity in Housing and Education in Simsbury. So it's a forum from 6 to 8. It's a virtual event. So, I, you know, I just wanted to bring that up.
When was that, Erin?
It is next Wednesday, from 6 to 8. So I just thought it was interesting, and I'd bring that up, because it would be before the listening session, so I did sign up, I just, I wanted to be a part of it to hear. You know, what was going on, but I. So people that have reached out to me about the listening forum were the ones, somebody, one of those people had reached out to let me know that this was happening.
So Erin, does it say who's sponsoring it?
Um. Let me see, hold on a second, I'm going to go back in. It's the Simsbury Diversity and Inclusion Working Group. The Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, the Simsbury Spirit Council, Simsbury Public Library, and Block Bias are the ones sponsoring the webinar. Meet these grassroots municipal and state organizations to discuss current civil rights laws regarding housing and education, how zoning affects these laws, and how that prevents socioeconomic diversity in our community. And it's, understand how small suburbs lack diversity through the cycle of affordable housing, socioeconomic diversity, racial diversity and diversity in education.
Yeah, you know, I'd be interested, can you forward the, with the email to, I'd like to see it, maybe all the Commissioners can take a look at it.
Yeah, this is something we probably better look at, that's very pertinent to what we're doing.
Yeah, you go, you sign up, um. You know what, I'll, I'll have to send it, you know what, I will do that, I'll send it to the town.
Yeah.
Because I, yeah.
Okay, good, good catch, yeah.
Very library.
I think we really should be aware of, you know, what's being discussed. I don't know if it's going to be 100% pertinent, but there's probably something that that we should at least consider.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great. All right, so Mike, maybe you could bring the document up, if you would.
Wow.
Yep, I see it. I thought the forward was nice. We have Sean Glenn in there still. Mike, I know she has left, you know, left the commission. Do we tend to keep people on, you know, she was involved at the beginning.
Um, maybe we'll say through, through her resignation date, since she, I mean, she was part of the conversations of updating these plans. I think she should get some credit for being part of those conversations.
Yep, agreed.
Good point.
Okay, good.
We did the same thing with the P O C D, if you remember.
Oh, really?
Oh, absolutely, there was someone that never even participated, and they put their name was in there. Yep, but they missed.
Who was that, Erin Levitt Smith?
Yes, it was, it was me. But they did get recognition, because they might have made a meeting or something, so. Because I remember bringing that up at the time, and they were on the board, so.
Okay, yeah, maybe Mark Drake.
No, it wasn't actually him, but that's okay. But I'm just saying there's precedent that we left, you know, even though they didn't participate in the.
So I'll probably note, you know, when, when she resigned, so say, from beginning to start while she was part of this. Like I said, I think it's good to give her credit, she was part of the conversation.
Right.
So continuing with reading through this, the first line that's here, what is affordable housing? We started Connecticut General Statute 8-30G requires that 10% of the total housing stock for a community to be set aside as affordable. I think that we can, we can scratch that here, that's my proposal. We, we talk about the 10% later on in the document, and that doesn't really define what is, what is affordable. I think the next sentence does a real good job of defining what's affordable. So, that's my proposal.
I think it does, though, I mean, that's, isn't that the whole basis of the 30G?
I think you have to say, I'd like to leave it in, but.
I would too.
When it says a home is considered to be affordable, then you'd, then you'd have to say, buy the statute and identify the statute.
So how about, how about we do this? Change it to be Connecticut General Statute 8-30G, and then Mike, maybe spell out, you know, the Affordable Appeals Act, or whatever the real thing is, defines affordable as blah, blah, blah. And then at the, at the end of the paragraph, that's where we put in that, you know, the statute requires that 10% of the total housing stock for a community be set aside as, or I don't know about set aside, that's got a different, set aside to me is a, is a different, a different topic.
Just say be.
Yeah, to be, to be affordable.
Right.
Okay.
That tells the reader where the definition of affordable comes from.
Right.
Right, I agree.
Yeah. On that existing last sentence, in order for the housing unit to count, it says must be, must be subjected to a deed restriction, but could we say among other qualif, possible qualifications as shown in table, I don't know what it's called, on page six?
Or just take that out?
Yeah, I mean, it, it isn't just deed restricted, and in fact, a good hunk of our document is talking about other things that could be done.
Well, can't you just say one of the requirements is that the house be deed restricted?
Well, it's not one of the requirements, one of the possible mechanisms to be considered affordable.
It is one of the requirements, the, yeah, the others are, are part of the point system as determining whether you reach your 10%.
Ah, okay, thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
Right, but it's, in order to count toward the community's official tally, then these other options are available to count toward that tally.
So that sentence directly relates to the previous sentence, we're talking about, you know, the home's price to someone making the 80% or less the area median income, 30% of their income cannot go, 30% of income can't go towards their housing costs, or they can't exceed 30%, I should say. So, I mean, either way, it's fine, or we can even change it to say, there's, you know, like I said earlier, there's, there's, there's kind of a series of points that are given.
Right, I mean, I just, my only objection, I liked the one before, the definition is, it's just that it, it states it must be this, but it can be several other things. That in order for the housing unit to count toward the community's official talent, there are several conditions, such as deed restricted, you know, there are several possible condition, I don't know, conditions or.
Yeah, I know, I know what's happening, we're getting, you know, we're getting tangled up in the, in the 10% number.
I don't think we need this line, I don't think that line needs to be there anyway.
Yeah, I don't either.
About it later, when we're talking about the table six, the table on page six.
Right.
I'll delete it.
Because, yeah, it does get confusing when we start talking about 10%. You know, that, that's the, the point system, okay, and that introduces schemes other than, than just deed restricted. I know, I know what you're saying, you know, Holly, or.
Well, again, I, you know, I'm gonna still, it's just that we, we look again at the, the things like that CHFA housing. I just had dinner with somebody who needs, who needs affordable housing, and who said, boy, if they could get that, they'd be able to move back to Simsbury, so.
Why couldn't they get it?
I, I didn't, I didn't have, I had to get, I had to come to this meeting, so I didn't get to press it. But I was trying to understand what it was, you know. When I brought it up a couple meetings ago, it was kind of dismissed as nobody wants that. And I said, well, is that something desirable, and would that help someone afford a house? And again, that's something that can be applied to our existing stock that meets that, that cost of ownership less than 30% of the gross income, because we already have so much stock available that does that. If we had more of those, if we had more of those CFHA loans on the houses, if, you know, if, we could easily make 10%, because we have 30% that meets that, that price definition.
I don't think we could easily meet it, we need, we need 90 or something, 400 or something, you know.
Well, we have hundreds of homes that meet that price. It's only have that, that little qualification in the point system that'd be called affordable, but.
Holly, the last time we looked it up when we were analyzing Climax Road, I think you and I both did it independently, we came up with something between 25 and 30 homes on the market for less than $250,000.
Right, I have done a week-by-week analysis of the, of all of the recorded sales in Simsbury that, as reported by the Hartford Current, which may not be all of them. But for the summer months, week by week, sometimes 45, once more than 50% of the houses that were, that were sold were at, at under $275,000, at or under, in one of the weeks. And from week to week, it was always right between 30 and 40% of all sales were in that range.
Okay, so, and what you're trying to convey is that if those had been financed by CHFA, they would have.
We wouldn't be frightened, we'd be done.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, that's what.
Because they're not deed restricted.
No, even, I don't know if they get a full point or whatever, but I don't think it would add up to the sufficient number of units to get us to 10%.
Well, I mean, we're talking hundreds of potential units.
Mr. Chairman, you're, you're correct.
I'm only looking at this table on page six, so when we get down to page six, we could, why don't we talk about it then?
Okay, so, you know, I was really hoping that we could have consensus on this document tonight.
Right.
I've heard some comments about the first paragraph yet, so far. Mike, you seemed to signal that you understood what we wanted. Can we make the changes live here?
Uh, no, I wouldn't be able to do that live. But I can, I can, what I could do is this, is make the changes, email it to the commission tomorrow.
Okay. All right, let's, let's press on here, commissioners. Yep, I didn't have any comments on the rest of the page.
I didn't either.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Next one was very clear to me.
Yep.
We get into why is affordable housing important?
So I thought, didn't we say, data, oh. I thought we were taking out the 2000 census, because it was 20 years old.
Yeah, I apologize, that, that, that needs to go, I will delete that.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, we, we, we landed on keeping the first paragraph and the second one, and deleting that.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
No, no, don't, no, I just, I, I thought, I remembered that, so thank you, all right.
Okay, so now we get to page six. Affordable Housing Appeals Act, or Connecticut General Statute 8-30G, provided an avenue for additional affordable housing in Connecticut. The intent of the law was that every community in Connecticut would provide no less than 10% of total housing stock as affordable housing. Deed restrictions are utilized so that the home's affordability would be protected for a period of 30 years. According to the Connecticut Department of Housing, 2019 Affordable Housing Appeals List, Simsbury has 4.74% of the total housing stock considered to be affordable to those individuals making less than the area median income. Below breaks down how the percentage was determined by the D, by DOH.
So my, my point is, it, deed restrictions aren't the only, aren't the only condition for affordability, in fact.
I, I, I agree with you, Holly.
Okay.
So we're still stuck on this deed restriction sentence, Mike, in the first paragraph.
Well, I, I think, I don't think it added anything to the first paragraph, because it implies that, it says, in order for it to count toward the community's official tally, tally, the property must be subject. And yet, right now, I mean, because it doesn't affect, include Climax Road, we actually, our official tally doesn't include any that have that, our current official tally. So I just, that's an inaccurate sentence, that's all.
So, so, under the Affordable Appeals Act, the only way you add new, new quote-unquote units is the deed restriction. The others are really specific to the occupants of, of structures, meaning the government assistant, tenant rental assistant, assistance, CFHA or USDA loans. But, but 830G is very specific, because that first sentence, that first paragraph has to, it applies to 830G, although that there's points given to other, other assistance or mechanisms. The only way that a community adds more affordable units, and you're getting full points, is through the deed restrictions.
Mike, is the, are VA loans part of the government assisted loans?
Uh, I, I don't think so, I'd have to check on that.
That's the, that's the largest component of our numbers. And I think it's important that we understand what government assisted is.
Some of that is, some of that numbers is Section 8, because we do have some Section 8 housing in Simsbury, in Terrifil. There's one of the apartment buildings in Terrifil isn't approved for Section 8. Some of that has to do with individuals that are receiving assistance, either at the Housing Authority and/or the specialty housing off, off of, in the north, the North Village, Okagea, Okagea Commons. So that, that, that term, government assistance, there's a lot of things that go into that. That group of 289 of those places are people that are receiving assistance.
Right, so Mike, I think, you know, if I understand Holly correctly, and it's kind of how I understand it as well, is that, you know, this Affordable Housing Plan that we're trying to put together doesn't necessarily need to focus only on deed restricted units.
Thank you, Bill, yes.
Maybe, maybe, maybe a misunderstanding this.
The way I've understood it, it has to follow 830G, so you're adding more units. If you're adding more units, it has to be deed restricted to add units. Because everything else is based on individuals.
So it's either.
Okay, but what if we had a program, Mike? What if we had an education program, so that new, that we told people, wow, you want to come to Simsbury here? Here's how you apply for a CHFA loan, and let's say we get 90 more applicants for that that are accepted. There's our 90, it would go into our tally, it would go right into our tally. Because it shows it goes right into our tally.
And Mike, one of the reasons I asked about the VA loans is.
Yeah, I mean, that could be, that could be a different, did I freeze?
I hear you, Mike.
I'm sorry, I thought I froze. Yeah, that could be, that could, I think that would be a discussion to get more in the, where we talk about on page 11 or 12 on how do we get to our adding, adding the 1% on. And Holly, yes, you're right, you could say something of the fact of public education on mortgage assistance that's available.
I didn't mean to change this, this at all, except to just take away the one pair, one, one, one sentence that people would think everything has to be deed restriction, that's all. Because we, this, it will show that you don't need deed restriction to get to the tally. It just, as you pointed out, that isn't a function of the new house you add. But, you know, again, we have lots, we, we have more than enough, more than 10% of our stock meets the financial requirement, the, the financial definition of no more than 30% of someone's income. We just don't, it's just, doesn't meet one of those little categories in the table to be counted. But if we could convert existing stock, and as you said, later on, that would be, you know, that it belongs in that section as to how we're going to accomplish it.
But in this paragraph, it's not saying it has to be deed restricted, it just says the deed restrictions are utilized for 30 years. So that's.
This isn't the sentence, Erin, I was objecting to, it was that sentence in the first paragraph that said.
Yeah, I agree, that could be, I, I, like, strike it and then put it elsewhere, yeah.
I, I would say deed restrictions can be utilized, because there's other things that can be utilized.
Yeah, yeah.
Deed restrictions can be utilized, and then it's, then the whole thing's perfect.
Yep, yep, I agree.
I'll make that change.
Okay, see, Bill, it wasn't that bad.
Yep, that's good, that's good.
And, and God bless us, if we can do an education program and get 90 more homes, we're, we're free and clear. Do that year after year, and we'll be at 10%.
Okay. We, are, we done with this page then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I want to go back, Mike, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
The, the last paragraph, "In the case of Simsbury, a family of four would require a gross income of $78,320." For what?
Good.
To qualify or?
Yeah.
To qualify under 830G, to qualify under 830G.
But is
Oh, actually, would require a gross income of no more than that.
Right.
Under 830G.
That's, uh, that's 80% of the, is that the 80% number?
That's why I was about to go back to check.
Yeah, that's the 80% number.
That's 80%.
It's, I don't have an issue, you know, with repeating it. I think it's okay. It's important. But let's just define it a little bit better. Uh, you know, an income of no, of no more than 78,320, uh, to, uh, meet the 80th, uh, 80% requirement, or however you want to state it.
Okay.
I think part of what makes it confusing is the word require. So, as Holly said, to change that, so would no more than rather than, uh, require a gross income.
Right, that's the limit. That's the limit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds better to me.
Yep. So I'll change it to no more than.
Yep.
And so the next.
Okay.
I, did we talk about taking out diversity and putting in another word? Or did we, maybe that's we used diversifying rather than diversity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I took, I took out, uh, previous reference to diversity and tried using synonyms for that.
Okay.
Or just deleted it. I think I caught all of them.
Okay.
This one, diversify, this is right from your P O C D, that term.
Yeah. Now, on the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
No, on the, on the blue box on the left in four, number four, there's just a typo. Oh, maybe not. Okay, wait. Did you send two copies of this? Because there was one correction I was going to make and it was correct on this copy, but not on mine.
Yeah, my
Trying to catch.
What I down, what I downloaded from Dropbox, my paragraph, uh, the blue paragraph at the top on the right, isn't this.
Yeah, I, mine looks different too, Alan, because I, I was going to make a change.
The one I got is basically unreadable. I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
Mike emailed us the most current version, right?
Yeah, I did. I did. I don't, we, we uploaded this version to Dropbox this afternoon. It should be the same thing, unless there was some kind of coding.
I've got the Dropbox open on my, on my computer and it's exactly what you've got on your screen, but you're showing.
Mine was same with you, Alan. So in number four, it should be housing for seniors or meet other housing needs, not of housing needs. And I double checked the P O C D and that's how it's worded in the P O C D. So you see where the second to the last line in number four?
Yep.
So housing for seniors or not of, I, that's what, that's what it's worded in the P O C D.
Okay.
Can we just go over some of the language in that paragraph I'm talking about? I'm having trouble getting through it. It is important, it is important to considered family households. What?
Oh, I don't
That's what, what I have is, it is important to considered family households. I don't know what that says.
Didn't read consider, not considered.
It should be consider.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, and then the, the, did we fix that?
Yep.
And the next sentence, affordability for the rental market, wouldn't it be better to say affordability in the rental market?
Yeah.
Would help attract and retain, and, and, and help retain groups of people. I don't understand that either. Who are groups of people? I mean, what are we trying to say? Maybe it's just me, but that's, I just don't understand what that's saying.
We could just say retain people, would help attract and retain people.
People.
Affordability in rental market would also help attract and retain people.
And I don't like that word. Attract new people and retain current citizens, something like that? Is that what that's trying to say?
Yeah, no, you, you, Alan, I like the, the, yeah. So attract new and retain existing citizens.
Residents, maybe.
Residents.
Residents. Sorry, yeah.
Okay, the goal of this plan is the
This is
Okay, incremental shouldn't be capitalized.
Yeah, so this is directly from, um, Julie's, uh,
Aha!
Comment.
Well, I told you that. There was no way my grammar was correct on that.
No, 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 don't, 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 don't. Yeah, I will take the hit on the, on the extra capital I, but yeah.
I'm slaving with Julie.
I'm bad at typing.
The goal of this plan is the incremental small i. Improvement to increase affordability, affordable housing in town. That's awkward, I think. The goal of this plan is the incremental improvement.
Maybe
In creating affordable housing in town?
Or the incremental increase.
Right. Goal is, of the plan is the incremental increase.
That's clearer.
Yeah. Incremental increase of affordable housing. Yeah.
That's clear, I think.
Yep.
Seek to
I don't think we need the word incremental. Goal of the plan is the improvement of affordable housing in town.
But we are doing it incrementally.
Well,
We are, I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to do. That's what we're putting out.
I understand, but it's, um, you don't have to say that it's, in, in the boat, the goal of the plan is the improvement. It's not the incremental improvement.
It's not improving, it's actually increasing.
Yeah, I think what I'm
That's a better word, too.
The goal was to seek to make incremental improvements, acknowledging that we're not going to do the full 5% in one year. Or in five years.
What she just said, that's what makes sense. In the Army, they call a document like this a dream sheet. Meaning if you think you're going to get it, you're dreaming. Right, Julie?
Well, you could say the goal of the plan is the incremental improvement of affordable housing in town. Check out to increase.
Hmm, I would, I, the increase is quite specific, I think.
Well, Julie was just saying, her point was incremental improvement.
What, what is an incremental improvement?
I agree. I think it should be increase. I don't think it's improvement. I think it's, we're, we're trying to increase. The goal of the plan is the incremental increase of affordable housing in town.
I agree. And it's incremental because the, the, the plan was not to do it all in one false swoop, but to do it in 30 years.
Right, like Julie had said last time. Right.
Right.
So the goal of the plan is the incremental increase in affordable housing in town.
Okay, so I'll delete in, improvement too.
Yep.
Look at all that exec you speak I added and caused confusion.
Ten minutes we'll never get back.
So I don't mean to be dense and I am slow today. I'm having a hard time coming up with where the 70,000 and 50,000 came from in referencing earlier pages. Can you just help me explain, understand where those are coming from?
Isn't that a percentage of the area median income?
That's correct.
Yeah. I didn't say that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. No, I was just trying to figure out where it went back for less than 70,000.
Right, because we had already established 78,320.
Right.
As the, as the limit to, for the 80% of the median income.
Yeah, and I had lower than 50 for a single person. But I could be looking at it wrong. It could be me.
Mike, what were you thinking about with those numbers? Were they, were they just, you know, ballpark numbers?
Ball, ballpark numbers are more specifically maybe just highlighting now, we, we've mentioned already the 80 percentile, maybe hit on the 60 percentile too. You know, don't lose, don't lose the 60 percentile individuals or households out of the mix. That's why like a family making less than 70,000 or an individual that's below 50.
So, but on page three, 60% AMI at 70 is like six people, between six and seven. That's a, that's
No, I, I understand. I got to change those numbers.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I'll change those numbers so they're more accurately, but I was, but I wanted to maybe add that in there so that, you know, we're not losing that portion of, of the
Gotcha.
If that's okay.
I was actually thinking of suggesting taking those first two paragraphs out, but if you revise the 70 and 50 to reflect the, the numbers that we've already presented earlier, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm good to, to keep it.
Okay, so I'll revise the first for a family, let's say a family of four at 60%, and then is a single at 60%.
As opposed to 80?
Yeah, I think it gets confusing using different figures.
Okay, then maybe, maybe just what Bill said earlier is just delete that sentence to limit that confusion.
Yeah, I, I don't think those sentences are needed.
Yeah.
They, the third paragraph, which goes right to the goal of the plan.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so my suggestion, I'm going to go back to it, is to strike the, the first two line, the first two sentences.
Okay.
I know what you're trying to do, Mike. You're trying to keep it, you know, some continuity in there and, 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 um, but I think it's pretty, it's pretty obvious earlier on in the document.
Okay.
Yep, we have the gold in its box all by itself.
Yep. That works.
All right, then we go on to talk about, uh, some of the, uh, opportunities to meet the goals. We talked about new development and redevelopment. Inclusion of deed restricted affordable units. Yep, okay. Simsbury Center in developing the Simsbury Town Center Form Base Code. Consideration was given to find a way to attract or spur residential development in town center. The code permits residential development with favorable densities for the developer. Simsbury Center is a walkable and vibrant town center that would highly, that would highly desire
Be desirable. Be highly desirable, period.
Yeah. So you can take for someone looking out. The town could consider amending the town center code to include an inclusionary zoning function. Okay? Then we talked about, uh, comment there, Mike?
Well, no, that's where I referred to the statute on the, on the sidebar of inclusionary zoning.
Right.
And I go one step further in the next paragraph.
Yep. Existing townwide zoning regulations have inclusionary zoning regulations which provide density bonuses to certain residential development. There's a typo there. Needed, provided that a portion of the development, you must, you must, at one time save that misspelling into your dictionary, Mike.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
It's improved.
Exactly wrong twice. Set aside for affordable units, okay?
Nice.
Is there any way to reformat so that to these regulations is a sentence on top of the box?
Yeah, yeah, I'll play with the text so that I can, so it's not, because also, uh, the sidebar is cut off. And I don't know if this is courtesy of using Dropbox versus being on the Word document.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, and, and I, I printed out the Word version, Mike, and it, it goes all the way to the bottom with another orange bar.
Okay.
And Erin, what were you, uh, referring to?
So that just to the left of the blue box, to these regulations, if that can just be a sentence on top of the box, rather than have it go down between the two boxes, it just looks kind of funky.
Erin, you're looking on the screen.
What?
You're looking on the screen. I think, Bill, you're looking at a printed version.
Yeah, that's not there in a printed version.
Yeah, the Word document looks great without that, Erin, so it looks good.
Oh, does it? Okay, I, because I thought it did when I looked at the Word document, but this is looking funky. Okay.
Right.
And I apologize. When we go, like I said, la, at the last meeting, when you're going from Word document to Dropbox, these sort of little formatting errors will come up.
Okay, no, as long as it looks good. And I, I didn't have it written down that it was an issue in the Word document, but
Okay, so Mike, um, the title here on the page,
Nine.
How will Simsbury meet affordable housing goals? Um, the title on the previous page is a little bit different.
I'll, I'll match them.
Okay, yeah. Small city program, Terrifield. Okay, we've already gone through that. No changes there. Simsbury Housing Authority. Okay, so here's an, uh, another opportunity to, um, affect the, uh, the number of units that go into the 10% calculation. Multi-family housing, yeah, we talked about that.
Yep.
Small cities community block grant program, that's fine. And again, Mike, just make sure, please, that the, the title is the same. Continuing. That's it.
So is, is this the block of land that the library or the senior center was going to be on?
And the high school before that.
Yeah, so I, I'm not, I don't like it there because it's over the main aquifer or one of the main aquifers in town. And there were reasons why it was rejected for other buildings. So I don't like the fact that we would even put it in there as an option when it's been rejected because of the aquifer and the water for two or three other structures. So why would we even be considering it for a development where there would be multiple homes? So I, I just, I have issue with that in this plan.
Well, we have to find afford places for affordable housing, Erin.
Uh, not over the main aquifer. I'm sorry.
But no, but this is, this is zoned for development.
But there was a reason why the other places were rejected, Bill.
No, that's not the only, that's not the only one.
Right, but that was one of the main reasons. Why would we be proposing a development on a piece of land that was rejected in, you know, in part because of the water? I'm just, if everyone else agrees, I'm going on record as objecting highly to using this in this plan that we're naming this property when there's been issues with other town lands. The town knows it, citizens know it. It's an issue and it should not, I, I don't believe it. I mean, I guess we could consider, but you know, I just, I object. I just object to the use of that piece of land for that reason.
Hey, Erin, I, I interpreted this, I, I get your point. I interpreted this as just an example of town-owned land that could
Hey, Erin, I, I interpreted this, I, I get your point. I interpreted this as just an example of town-owned land that could be used.
Really is considered.
Yes. I, we, I'm not saying, I don't think it should be considered when it was rejected three times. I mean, I'm just saying, so. I.
Mike, is there another property the town owns that can be used as the example?
I'd have to think about one.
I can't believe.
We could talk about this, we could talk about the state lots then.
You guys are gonna deny affordable housing, done with a, uh, you know, the, uh, the most, uh, up-to-date, um, development techniques to preserve the aquifer and we'd let, we'd rather leave it undeveloped.
I think you have to see what the proposal is before you reject that site. Maybe it should be rejected, but I think.
Do we need a specific example of a site, guys?
Right, that's my question. Do we need?
Can we just say investigate town properties for the development of affordable housing projects?
That's what I'm saying. I don't think we need that specific a site. That's what I'm saying. I object to that site being used. When I think it's very contrary, like, why even put it in there? The site, I'm saying.
Well, in any discussion, it's gonna become a, uh, an arguing point, just as it is in this conversation. So to, um, get around that, maybe you just don't put an example in. We use the words, but it doesn't have to have a, the example of this particular parcel.
Yep.
I agree. I don't, I, I just don't think it's necessary to put in the specific. When there's other properties, why, why target that? When we know that there's, there's potential issues.
I, I would agree. Let's just say that that's what we're gonna do. We don't need to have, uh, because, you know, again, we don't want to get the whole listing, uh, session also all wound up on a property that we haven't even proposed to the BOS. I mean, you know, I mean, it's, it, 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 it's, it's just a, for instance, but we don't need one if it's going to, uh, be problematic.
Or potentially, probably.
All right, Mike, let's, uh, although I think it's a, a great illustration, uh, if it, if it's causing this much commotion on the commission, uh, it, it may also do that in, uh, a more public forum. So I, I think the idea of, uh, considering, you know, town-owned property is a great one. Uh, maybe not, maybe, maybe not this one necessarily, so let's, uh, well, let's not make the document, um, controversial right out of the gate.
Okay, I'll take it out.
Though, Mike, I must say, I did like the fact that you had such a nice illustration.
So did I. And I love how they're saying, well, what's that, what, what's the development across the street?
Billings Gate?
Yeah, that one's not on the aquifer, though.
I'm not getting, see, the, look, like you said, look, at the commotion we have, you know, we, it, it won't help us on listening night.
Hey, in the P O C D, we talk about preserving our natural resources, preserving water, doing that, I'm just saying.
Yep, and we also, we also talk about, yeah, they're providing, uh, you know, the, the first light housing stock.
But not at the expense of our natural resources and our water.
Oh, so the natural resources trumps, uh, uh, less economically, uh, uh, or.
I think there's a balance. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that as a, you know.
Well, it certainly trumps eight thirty G, that's for sure. I mean, we got enough houses at that level.
Yeah, I know. If people feel like keeping it in, but I do think it can become a lightning rod for.
Let's take it out.
Do you, do you want me to find, well, I don't want to go down that road, another example.
I'll tell you what, Mike, you find one and run it by Erin first.
Okay, we got Erin's stamp for approval, I'm okay.
Hey, if you guys all want to put it in, you go right ahead. I said that from the beginning. I'm just going on the record of saying, this has been rejected more than once because of many issues, one of which is the aquifer. You want to put it in there and be a lightning rod, I will go and watch people. Fine, I will go with the majority. I'm just saying. And I usually don't have this strong of opinion, but I do about this because I've talked to many people about this parcel since our last meeting and everyone was against it, everyone. So you go right ahead and put it in. I, I will go with the majority. I just want to go on record as saying I don't like it, so I, that's fine.
We'll ta-, we'll take it out.
Okay.
I did my homework. I talked to people.
Well, it's done.
Erin, you've made the sale.
Okay, and, and, uh, we have rehabilitation of distressed properties. That one, uh, I really liked too.
Um. Add a list of all of this distressed properties. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
You know what, Julie, you, you must.
Go ahead and make fun of me all you want.
You must have read my mind.
Go ahead and make fun of me. I don't care.
No, actually, what I was gonna say.
It isn't funny. You guys laugh all you want. I find it insulting. I don't, I don't mind your opinions. I don't appreciate mine being mocked.
What I was going to say is that we are not putting examples in all of them, so I actually agree with you, Erin, in not calling out one example on one of them, so.
I'm just saying, there, not just you, Julie, there were several, so go right ahead. I don't mind being the laughing stock this time.
It was not the intention, Erin.
Well, it feels that way.
Okay, at, at the, uh, at the risk of opening up another can of worms, um, before we get to who can assist Simsbury, I would like to suggest one extra paragraph under, after rehabilitation of distressed properties. Actually, just one, one section with one title and one, and one sentence. Uh, and be, it being called government assistance education, is it the title? Uh, educate potential homeowners, home sellers and real estate agents about government assistance programs that can designate existing Simsbury housing stock as affordable. And I can send you that text, Mike, if, if everyone agrees to that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too.
Yeah, I think it sounds really good, Holly. Mike, I'll, I'll email it right to you. I'll, I'll read it one more time for anyone who wants to hear it again.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so again, where it says like rehabilitation is the title, the title is government assistance education. And then the, the sentence is educate potential homeowners, home sellers and real estate agents about government assistance programs that designate existing Simsbury housing stock as affordable.
Good.
Um, I'll, uh, Hicks sent.
Yeah, Holly, just email it to me. I think I got it, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I just, I just sent it to you.
Perfect.
So Holly, I'm just thinking about, um, who, who would you envision that would actually do the educating?
Well, I think that would be a, sort of a, a town of Simsbury, uh, initiative, you know, as, as we have initiatives on all these other, uh, activities. And in fact, I would volunteer for such a, a task force if, if they needed to staff it, and I think we could get other people who feel similarly about, again, turning our existing qualified stock into, uh, affordable designation. And I, I had a person, I had a friend who had to sell a house at a loss in that price range, uh, because they, they didn't know that that was such an option that could make it more affordable for people. You know, who actually took a loss because we, we do have so much stock at, at around the two, the, the two hundred, two fifty, uh, price range.
Okay, we'll include it. And we go on to talk about who can assist Simsbury. Okay, so we have the housing authority, not-for-profit housing organizations. And we go on to the goals and objectives. All right, so I think, um, we've already defined our goal, couple pages back in the blue box, so, uh, I, I'd prefer not to use that term again.
Actions, maybe?
Yeah, actions would be fine.
Mike, can you scroll up just a little bit? Thank you. Seems like the right word instead of goal would be objectives. Since we identified below the objectives for the town to consider.
That's a good word.
But these, these are, I, I, I like the word actions better because, you know, the, these are, uh, these are specific, um, instructions.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll just, I'm gonna replace everywhere where the term goal is used with actions.
And I, I'm, I'm suggesting we strike objectives.
So, um, yeah, I'm sorry, goals and/or objections, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I, if I, if I read this correctly, there's a couple, a couple actions that have not been discussed in the body of the document. I don't think, I don't think anywhere we talk about developing affordable housing ordinance. So how does that get introduced here or, or can it be? I'm thinking the actions are more like a summary of, uh, the other, uh, ideas that were discussed earlier on.
So we have to develop the affordable housing ordinance pursuant to our small cities grant, uh, program we're in. Um, maybe I'll add that in, uh, on page, the previous page, uh, page ten. As just a, a bullet saying affordable housing ordinance and then reference.
Yep.
You know, small cities, and that way, you're right, it ties it into an action.
Right. And ve-, investigate inclusionary zoning, we talked about that. Amend subdivision regulations to require a percentage of new developments to be deed restricted affordable units. Um.
I like that.
Right, but I think this, again, this is the first time that it's, uh, that it's, that it's, uh, introduced.
Uh, this has been in all the other versions, hasn't it?
No, no, yeah, I know, in the table, yes, but not in the body of the, uh.
Bill, does it go with page eight, the, um, new development redevelopment?
Yeah.
That's where I thought it would go, but, you know, oh.
Okay, 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 no, 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 the, the one, considering new developments, really, consideration of the inclusion of deed restricted affordable units. The inclusion of such units will be consistent with feedback and planning. Okay, so we don't specifically, uh, in that paragraph on page eight, talk about amending the subdivision regulations. Uh, so that, they're, they're, they're just a, a little inconsistent, Mike, um.
Do you want to, do you want me to add a sentence then?
Yeah, add a sentence into page eight about amending the subdivision regulations.
Um, uh, Bill, uh, originally, thi- this, this table's been in here for all the other iterations and it was our objectives for the town to consider so that the goal can be met. So these were not so much, these were considerations, action considerations, not a summary of all action items.
Okay, I, I, I understand. But some of them, some of them were the same. Some of them are the same as what's in the body. Um. To me, this should be, this, this table should be the collection of actions required to, uh, uh, implement the, uh, the, the incremental increase or the, 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 the increase.
Are these actions or are they recommendations?
These are actions. In my, in my mind.
So, Bill, would you prefer, just, we'll just ignore the, the table for the first time and go back starting on page eight, all the way to page ten, and go through each one of these, these things that are called out and add them to the chart?
But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just speaking for me right now.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just.
And I agree with Holly, I, I agree with Holly that, you know, these, these, um, goals or objectives as they were originally described have been here the whole time. Uh, are, is the intention to have these be additional items to consider, uh, compared to what's written in the body of the, of, of the document? Or is it to formalize the actions, um, identifying the responsible party? And the, uh, I think, what's it?
Bill, I have had the concept that it is this latter part, that it, it summarizes into a table the actions that have been described above and provides a who's to take action and by when. So it gives a lot more, uh, specificity to each action.
Yeah.
So I think the idea is.
Mike, you wrote it. How do you feel about us, uh, uh, doing, you know, I mean, I, I, Bill, I think your, your, uh, point is valid. I was just pointing out that we've, it's, it is the first time we've had a heartburn with it, uh, but, you know.
I, I don't have heartburn with it. I think it needs to be, each of the items need to have been mentioned above, and then this is the place where, where identifies who's to take the, uh, responsibility and by when.
Right.
So it's a very logical next follow-on from the section above.
Right, and Mike, if there are any items in here that are really, you know, um, something we want to, we want to maintain, like, let's take number four. Identify state and federal funding that can assist with the construction of new affordable housing units. That's a great idea, but we didn't talk about it in the body of the document. So we, uh, uh.
What about the Simsbury Housing Authority? Wasn't that part of, didn't it come with the idea that we should help the Simsbury Housing Authority, uh, perhaps, or realize their expansion plans?
Correct. So do you want it be, you, would you prefer that be specific to the housing authority? Just, I, I agree with you, Holly, because you're right. I did, we did discuss, they did have a, a potential expansion plan that really is put on hold for other reasons.
Yeah, and let me tell you, there's a group of people who know how to get the most amount of units for the least amount of money. It's, that's the.
So I, I, maybe I'll, I'm gonna reword that action so that it's specific towards adding more units at the housing authority through grants or federal funding.
Mike, I think the sequence here ought to be the same as the sequence up above. In fact, you could put numbers on this table that correspond to the numbers that are on the previous pages.
Uh, Dave, I like that, I like that, uh, suggestion. I, I could do that if everyone's okay with that. I agree.
Yeah, good idea.
Now, you know, the, now the, the, uh, the corollary here, Mike, is if there's something on this table that really has a lot of merit, which I think most of them do, I don't want to, I don't want to lose them.
Yeah.
You know, we either have to write them into one of the existing paragraphs earlier on in the document or create another, another bullet item there.
I think maybe the only one right now that's sitting out there that doesn't connect in is probably the incentive housing zone.
Yeah.
Comment. We talk about inclusionary zoning, we don't mention incentive housing zones.
Yep.
And. I mean, the town has investigated incentive housing zones in the past. And that's how we ended up with the workforce overlay housing zone instead of incentive housing zones. It's a little different. We went the route of inclusionary zoning versus IH, IHC.
Well, if you've already gone down that road and, you know, came up with a different.
Yeah, I would, I actually would take that out. Since, like you said, I don't mention it, I'll take it out.
Okay.
And then I'll add in a few more, obviously, boxes for, you know, like, for example, the distressed properties, investigating town-owned properties, et cetera.
Yep.
That are missing out of this table right now.
Do the commissioners agree with that approach?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm gonna follow Dave Blumey's suggestion, and I'm gonna all of these items will will follow as each each action was mentioned on pages eight through 10.
Yeah.
The same order.
Very logical.
Looks like a pretty solid document coming together.
Yep. Yep, for sure.
Well, um, is, we haven't talked about the the uh listening session. Is the thinking that that this document would be um available to people in advance of the listening session?
That's the whole purpose, right?
All right. Under the governor's executive order, we will have to have this document available prior to our meeting.
How far in advance?
Twenty-four hours.
Okay.
That's, that's following the letter of the law. If if obviously we could do it a few days ahead of time, I think people would appreciate that.
Should we call it the draft affordable housing plan?
Yeah, I'm gonna put draft all over it so that it's clear that this is not a final document.
And hence, Mike, we're listening to to see, it's it's a straw man.
Yep.
Can we uh clear up, like, process? For example, will questions be allowed? Because you're going to be asked if they can ask, they're going to ask if they can ask questions. What's our response to that?
Mike, why don't you pull up the uh the 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 listening session guidelines I you sent out.
But, did you like that, Phil?
Yeah, I loved it.
All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull this up. I I so I I commandeered this from another town um and kind of made it, you know, uh tailored it to our our situation. Let me just make sure I have that email open.
Which is a town we like.
Uh, I won't say, I can't say who. All right. So um I'll just go through. So what what we plan on doing, and I'll show you the draft agenda too, what I'm thinking about for a setup, because it both instructions will be out for the public. Um, this will be attached to our agenda. That will also kind of give the, you know, not just the the average agenda to the to the to the public, but kind of an expectation for the night. Meaning, start off, you know, introduction of the agenda item by the chair, a brief presentation by staff or or the commission. We'll read written comments that are received first from members of the public, and then we'll have public comment. Um, I wanted to be clear for the public comment, you know, just saying that prior to the meeting, you need to register to speak, um, of which I'll show you on the agenda, the instructions for registering to speak. Uh, during the meeting, uh, we're gonna ask, and and Bill or myself will probably run this by two, the general housekeeping. Everyone mute themselves unless they're unless they're speaking. No one is to speak until they're recognized by the chair. Um, the reason why we wanted the registration is that way, Bill, you're gonna have a docket of who wants to speak, name, et cetera.
Yep.
Um, which, you know, first clearly state your name and address, spelling of your name, address all your comments to the commission, um, and try to keep the comments as clear, you know, as possible. Um. The the last thing is, just a reminder, that this is a public workshop. This is not a public hearing.
Right.
Um, the planning commission is looking for input. The meeting's not intended to serve as an open conversation directly with the commission. You're looking for feedback. You're looking input.
Yeah.
So, yep.
Will you have, will you or the administrator of the the Zoom meeting have the ability to to mute individuals or mute the, everybody except the speaker?
Yeah, yeah, we we can actually Laura, the mute police, could mute everyone or could mute someone who, you know, decides to unmute themselves and start speaking when they shouldn't.
Yeah, I think it's important. And another thing is, are you gonna establish kind of a a a amount of time that each person could have?
So, so that's a good question. That's, that's a question for the commission. Um, that's one thing that this other community did. Um, this was kind of lifted a little bit off of their um uh guidelines for public hearings un- under Zoom. But they've had a lot of contentious public hearings. So they were limiting people to three minutes a a a time, a three-minute clip to speak to the commission. I don't know if you want to limit people on this. I mean, it is a listening session, so it's a little different. But at the same time, I don't want to be on Zoom all night.
Um, I think it's important to have some limit. Maybe it doesn't need to be three minutes, but something. Or have Bill.
This is a long enough time.
I agree, there should be a limit, probably five is is what I have in mind.
And you might want to put it, we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Let's not be too dictatorial.
Yeah, you know, we've done in the past, you know, we've, we've put a time limit on it and then and we said, but if you'd like to continue addressing the commission, you can come back when when everyone's done.
Yes. Okay, I'll I'll add that as a bullet into my thing.
Five minutes, but you know, and you can come back after all the speakers are done if you have more to say.
So this answers my question. They, there will be no questions. I'm not complaining about that. I'm just trying to be clear.
Right. If someone asks a question, we'll have to take it as input. Um, you know, we're we're not going to respond.
Good. I think you should.
Um, Bill, do you, would you envision summarizing at the end with sort of, here's the next steps?
Sure, yeah.
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm looking at the agenda and it sort of ends with public comment, but I I think that maybe a better way is to have the chairman do a summary of, you know, summary and next steps.
Yeah, Mike, you can make that uh bullet C there.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so so this is just the, what I referenced in that other document, how we plan on setting up the agenda. So there'll be instructions to, with a certain cutoff, that they've written comments or emailed directly to me. And I will upload that to your Dropbox, so you'll you'll have it. Also, one of us will read those, I I will read those into the record as we receive them. Um, and then anyone who's wishing to speak, we're gonna ask that they email Laura. Laura's gonna maintain the list for you, Bill. Names, address, and phone numbers if they're calling in on their phone, if they don't sign into Zoom.
Right.
So you can, we can know who's who.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna also ask that, you know, a cutoff on 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 time for people to register. We may actually change it to the two, the the day of the meeting at noon.
Okay.
But it just, just to give people a little more time.
Are you going to put out any notice of this?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna try to get the word out as every avenue that's possible. And I would, I'd like to, we're gonna preferably file this agenda sooner rather than later. So that it's out there too. So if anyone subscribes to our agendas, they'll get an email as soon as this thing's uploaded.
And what date are we thinking?
In two weeks, on the 27th.
Yeah. Mike, will you have uh one or two slides? Yeah, I I saw the, you know, the first bullet item was, you know, comments by uh town staff or or the commission that kind of uh sets the 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 stage for uh the discussion?
Yes, I can prepare that.
Okay, just even one, just one.
Let me email it to you.
Yeah, please.
Bill, I want to think whether or not you're going to do this as we have done, page by page, or in the beginning, go through the whole document, then circle back in the end, get comments.
That would not be my preference.
No, me neither.
Um, I just, you have to decide ahead of time.
Yeah, no, I, the the uh, the document is gonna be uh made available. Uh, I would expect that people will read it and have uh comments related to the uh, the 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 draft version.
I think there will be people who haven't read it, and we just tell them where the link is so that they can, while they're on Zoom, they can go look at it.
Yeah, yeah, we might get some people who are just, you know, interested uh or wanna wanna have um, you know, their 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 thoughts captured um during, you know, a public, a public session. That's fine. Okay, so Mike, you'll you'll make the changes and send it out to everybody hopefully by tomorrow, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and commissioners, we want to kind of turn this around quickly. Uh, I I I do not want to be accused of trying, you know, sandbagging or or dragging our feet. Uh, I'd like the document to be available as soon as possible. Um, and then uh have it public, have to have this um public hearing session publicized as quickly as as we can. Okay, I think we've kind of wrapped that up. Um. Like, I know it's not on the agenda, but do we have any correspondence?
No, you do not.
And um, I happened to uh watch a little bit of the public bill, I mean, I'm uh not public building, but the Design Review Board meeting last week.
Mm-hmm.
Big doings.
Yes.
With Andy's, Andy's Plaza. Uh, what else? So I guess another car dealership over uh by the Best Buy?
It'll be a electric car dealership, first in Connecticut.
Yeah, not Tesla.
Not Tesla. A few other, a few, what is it, for the other manufacturers.
Wow.
So, and then the 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 other big news was uh Chris Nelson is under contract to purchase the Simscroft property.
Is he really?
And he did a preliminary presentation with the Design Review Board on a potential redevelopment of that property.
Yep.
This is the one downtown that we saw a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it, uh, how does that compare to what we were shown a few years ago?
What you were shown a few years ago uh is not financial, financially viable.
Oh.
The banks will not fund it.
Beautiful.
Yeah, but he's still, he's uh, no, no, it's not, it's 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 four buildings versus um a whole scatter around. Um. I'm trying to remember how many units there. Um, I think it was 70 units in each building. Um, with 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 garages underneath, he's setting them up as apartments.
Gotta get that exclusionary uh zoning thing done quickly.
So I could tell you this.
Hold on, what what did you say, Holly?
We better get that inclusionary.
I thought you said exclusionary.
You know, I probably said it wrong, but I meant, let's get some affordable homes in there, you know?
So I will say that uh in discussions with Chris, he is gonna put an affordability component in this.
Right.
So I I have to give him credit on that.
And Mike, the uh, the presentation that was um given for the Andy's Plaza, um, is someone willing to do that, or or is that just a concept?
No, he's doing it.
What's he doing?
Uh, it's a total rehab of of the facade. He's painting the building. He's gonna change the interior layout of the tenants. He's adding a drive-through. Um.
For what kind of businesses?
Uh, two office spaces, which have, I've been told are medical-related. So. And then two little smaller retail unit, uh retail spaces out front.
Yeah.
What's the drive-through for, though?
Uh, a restaurant, 12, 1,200 square foot area associated with a restaurant.
Fast food one?
I had no answers.
Nowadays, they all need to be drive-through.
Yep.
Wow, you know, I'm not keen on a Burger King. Wouldn't be that, I hope.
Alan, you were just talking about not having a lot of restaurant options either.
But they have a Burger King in West.
There is a Burger King.
You have to admit, that's not really consistent with the sense of place in the town center.
We'll see.
We have any.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any uh any inside information, Alan. I, you know. Yeah, we have Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' was in there before.
Well, there's a difference, though, I think. But, okay.
Dunkin' Donuts is part of the New England landscape.
Well, I I I will say, though, he he labeled it as a a drive-through for a restaurant or commercial space, so it could be a bank.
Yeah.
Well, it was, the 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 plans were very interesting. You know how the plans are always look good.
So this was the Design Review Board?
Yeah, yeah.
And zoning commission.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, next time I will not be in the Witness Protection Plan. Uh, my lighting consultant will have me lit.
Okay, any other comments, commissioners? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
And I second.
David seconds. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn the meeting? Hearing none, I'll take the, I'll take the vote. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries or passes unanimously. Thank you all, and the meeting is adjourned.